And so, I mean, basically, it's on the agenda and we... That's all I needed to say was the applicant has withdrawn the application.
Okay.
And that will be reflected in the minutes next month?
Right, right. So we've just, in fact, covered item A.
Okay. Well, then, I just wanted to make sure that the agenda was clear. I wasn't sure whether... Because I understood that it was going to be withdrawn, too. I just wasn't sure if we need to address the agenda item itself.
Right. It's just a legal issue.
Mr. Chairman, I'll approve... I'll make a recommendation to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Let's move on to the minutes of the last meeting from February 12th. Do we have any changes or additions or corrections to those minutes? Having heard none, does anybody want to...
We'll approve.
Okay. Do we have a second?
A second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Let's move on to the Citizens' Forman Forum. Do we have anybody signed up for the Citizens' Forum?
No, we do not.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to take the opportunity during the Citizens' Forum, as I'm a citizen aside from being a commissioner, I would like to congratulate the newly-elected town officials, Mayor Barone and Councilman Fritz-Hahn and Councilwoman Judy Cantu. I congratulate them, and I want to also thank all my supporters during the campaign. Oh.
Let's try again. I'd like to congratulate the newly-elected town officials, Mayor Dan Barone, Councilwoman Judy Cantu, Councilman Fritz-Hahn. And now, I think the committee has to gather and support them, and everybody do their part. And I want to also thank to all my supporters during the campaign. And we embark on a new chapter. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Pavel. Thanks for your participation and running yourself.
Thank you.
So, having heard no other citizens in the Citizens' Forum signed up, let's go ahead and move on to the public hearings. Let's go ahead and address item 8A, case number PZ 2013-26. This is the final public hearing for Del Notre Properties. And I think we can just stop it right there.
Yes. The applicant has withdrawn his application.
Do we have to vote on it or anything?
No.
Okay. So that's off the list.
Okay. And that'll be addressed as Commissioner Garcia had addressed earlier. Okay. Let's move on to the ordinance. This is item 8B, ordinance 14-05. This is an ordinance to update and adopt the town of Taos zoning map. Consideration and possible approval of the ordinance 14-05. We have a map in front of us. Ms. Perkins, is that you going to be addressing this issue?
Yes. The zoning map hasn't been adopted for several years, and the attorneys... The town attorney asked me to please bring this forward and get the zoning map adopted. Generally, the attorney likes to have the zoning map updated every year, so it stays up-to-date. I don't... It's been quite a few years since this was updated. Hopefully, their... The zoning is correct on it. I don't have the history to know whether or not it is or not, so I was hoping that the commission could kind of look at it, and members of the public, and let us know if they see anything that they think is incorrect. I've noticed that there's quite a few uses in-town that don't actually mirror what the zone allows. They've been grandfathered in, or they've been annexed in from the county, and for some reason, the zoning doesn't quite match with the actual uses. But other than that, I think the zoning map is correct. And we show the annexed areas, and they're all in white. And then, there's a little description that our GIS person put together. As far as some of these parcels, he actually had zoned, and I asked him to make them white on this annexation map, because I guess they have some history, but if the town did not have control over that land, I don't know how we could have zoned it. So, you know, with this annexation process, we'll have to have the property owners or neighborhoods actually asked to be zoned a certain zone, and then we'll bring that before you, and then to the council.
Ms. Perkins, do we have a copy of the former map that we could compare and contrast to?
You know, the former map would be with the clerk's office, and I kind of was looking for it, and I couldn't find it. But I could dig deeper and see if we don't have something that's been scanned, and see if I can't get it printed.
So, I'm going to play dumb here for a second, but the way I see the map on, you know, the white, is that that's the county, correct?
Right. And then, there's some white areas that are labeled like 1, 2, 3, and we could point them out.
Sure. Would you?
Yeah. This is hard to read.
So, the first one is here as 1.
Okay.
And it's in the... Right now, it's kind of in a zone that's the Highway Corridor Protection District. And this is Medina Lane, north of La Cucina Restaurant. And then, on... Then, there's 2, which is kind of landlocked by, again, the Historic Conservation/Preservation District. And then...
Wait. Is that the Highway Corridor Protection?
Yeah. Highway Corridor Protection.
Okay.
And then, we have 3 here. Sorry, I'm too busy looking at the numbers.
It's okay.
And this is, and a zone that's currently R1, is adjacent to an R1 zone. But again, it's just like 1 parcel.
What is the T designation, the blue? What is that?
The T designation is our New Urbanism Transit Zone.
Oh, that's a new one.
So, when you look in the code, there's like this special section for New Urbanism, and it has these transit codes. And depending on the transit, that determines kind of the density, and it's a form-based code. So, it's less about, you know, like separating uses, but actually having uses that are mixed in, but you're more...
It's like planned unit development within the zoning?
Right. It's like mixed use. It allows for more mixed-use zoning.
Great. Sounds interesting.
Okay. And then, we have 4 here that's unzoned on Wymer Road and Cunningham Street. And these are 8 split parcels and 5 other adjacent parcels.
So, let me... I mean, we can go through all these, but...
Right.
These parcels that you're describing, are they part of the town or part of the county?
These are the parcels that have been proposed while they were in the annexation. And it's my understanding that the county is now, you know, fighting the town as far as they filed suit.
So, these are parcels that the county is disputing that the town can annex?
Well, they've been annexed.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay. So, they're annexed currently, but they're unzoned.
So, the white legend then doesn't necessarily apply, because they're actually... They are town... Technically, town.
Yes. So, within the town boundaries.
Okay.
So, that... So, we have this red area here that shows the edge of the town.
Right.
Right. And then, let's see. So, there's like parcels all in here, and so they go all the way, like this is 14 up here, 17 up here, 18 up here. I mean, they kind of go this way up the map as far as the annexed parcels.
And so, everyone with a number on it is something that the county is challenging?
Well, in the annexation, yes.
That's what I meant.
Yes. These are all parcels to be annexed. Or they're annexed in, but we haven't zoned them. And so, I have people that are actually calling me that own property, like up in here, and they... They're out of Santa Fe, and they keep asking, "When are we going to zone this land?" Because right now, it's unzoned. So, we're not regulating the uses that are on that zone.
So...
Or in that area.
Without going into legal, because this is Mr. James's purview, but technically, the land has been annexed.
Right.
So, it is town land.
Right.
Even though the legend says it's Taos County land, because it's under white.
Well, you have it's unzoned. He has it marked here, "unzoned."
I got you.
And he wrote like a 20 or 21 or whatever to show the parcels.
So, the question then is, and maybe you're not asking a question, but I would think that the question is, since it has been annexed, then isn't your duty, is the planning department, to go ahead and zone it, to get it zoned? And what's the process for doing that? And then, in the event that the county comes back and the court were to rule that, in fact, this was not annexed, then that zone would be eliminated?
Right. That's correct.
Okay.
Yes. So, I was like one person in the planning and zoning department. So, I... We now have a new planner. So, this is why we're starting at the base, with the base map, making sure that everybody agrees with the zoning. And then, we'll go forward, working with the neighborhoods, and we'll probably go with, you know, similar zoning to what's surrounding those areas. Some of them are parcels, some of them are like lots of parcels, more like a neighborhood. But we also have to talk to the property owners and see what uses they want to allow and what uses they don't want to allow.
That seems to be... Is there some kind of precedent that other communities have followed in the situation in order to make a determination? I mean, it seems to be a very... Maybe purposely, kind of a loose criteria on how you would make a determination.
The city of Santa Fe has done it, and they're on their second round of the annexations. In the first round, they had quite a bit of trouble with, and he was telling the Mark O'Leary... Oh, Larry. Mark, right. Anyway, the head of the planning and zoning department down there, he said, "There are quite a few issues that you need to address, and so, yes, we're going to talk with him and work with him as far as what his experience has been and how..." As he said, "There's quite a few things with the second go-round that they're doing, that they learned after going through the first round."
So...
Go ahead.
I don't know if you may be asking the same question, but so, would it be then a process that you guys would go through and then come before the commission on a proposal for zoning? And then, we would vote on that?
Right.
And then...
There'd basically be a zoning.
Be like an actual formality that we would go through to zone?
Right.
And we could hear from the public, and the public could say, argue one way or another, and we would ultimately make that decision if there was a dispute?
Right. And then, it goes to council. So, all re-zonings go first to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then the Planning and Zoning Commission makes a recommendation, then to council. And council makes the final decision. Then, that decision could be appealed. So...
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I had the same question that you just asked, but to follow up with that, what... How long of a process are you looking at going through this whole review with the owners and bringing it to the commission? Is it going to take several months, or...
We were thinking it would take several months. We have a new administration, so I don't know.
Okay.
Good answer.
Mr. Chairman, my concern is... Because on the agenda, it indicates they want us to approve what's being presented to us, but some of the comments you've made, you're not sure if this is correct, or the last one we can compare to, to see if there are any other changes, or this is the correct map that's been utilized in the past.
The only thing that we could do so that there would be the certainty would be to take the previous map that was adopted, and then go through all the re-zonings that occurred since then, and give you a list of what that base map was, and then give you a list of all the re-zonings that have occurred since then. And then, that might make you feel more comfortable.
When was the last time it was adopted?
Um, I think it was '99.
Oh.
And maybe just as a formality, maybe I don't have the document, but there actually doesn't seem to be a document that actually is entitled 14-05. We have the zoning map, and we have the notes on the annexation, but is there an actual document that is...
There was a legal ad that was advertised as far as the ordinance to adopt the town's zoning map, and that's essentially what it said.
Okay.
And that, you know, the property owners within 300 feet would be notified. State statute requires that property owners within 100 feet actually get certified mailing. But with this zoning, you know, this zoning map, because it's so large, it just basically got advertised as a legal ad in the paper.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Commissioner Luks, I'm going to ask you a question, actually. Do you remember the T1 zone being there before?
No.
Okay.
No. I'm pretty sure it's not on the previous map.
So...
That's new, addition to T zoning.
I think it's been there for quite some time. That's been...
I must have... I must have the old map, old, old map, because I don't remember seeing that. That's why it caught my eye. But...
If I go through the code, I can figure out when it got adopted.
Sure.
That'll be interesting.
Sorry. We're like all over the place.
I think that, I mean, while you're looking that up, I think... I personally would be more comfortable with adopting this if we could actually see the changes from any previously adopted map. And I know it might be difficult to track some of them, but, you know, I don't remember ever addressing a T1 or a T3 or any of those T zones at all. And I'm not necessarily saying they're bad, but I think that if we're going to be thorough in doing our jobs and...
Yeah. Would that be... If it was adopted, would that have been something that had to go before PNZ, or was it just merely between the planning department and the council?
This should have...
Because I don't... I don't ever remember.
This was a text amendment to the code, so it should have gone through planning and zoning, and then the council.
Boy.
That's the process for making a code change.
And you know, it may have been, Ms. Perkins, something that we addressed in text, but we've never been shown a visual piece, a map, that actually...
Maybe that's where the disconnect is.
Yeah, maybe.
It would be interesting to know the date.
Guess anything else?
Yeah. I'd like to see that.
Okay. So, the zoning map here was under ordinance 09-01 in 2009. That was the zoning map as referenced in this, even in this TND district zoning. And the TND district consists of these transect zones, and so, it defines each zone, and it's like, you know, basically this much of the code.
I better bring myself up to speed on it.
I don't...
Yeah.
I mean, we could do like a little presentation on it if you would like.
I would like that.
Okay. It'll help me get more familiar, too. I mean, part of my problem is I haven't been here that long.
Right.
So, I don't know how much you know and how much you don't know, and...
And we all know different things.
Right. Pavel's been on here quite a while, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nine years?
Probably more. I don't exactly remember. And I couldn't get it out of the public records.
All right. Well, I think we've beat this one to death. We have a motion on the table regarding, I guess that would be item 8A, ordinance 14-05.
I guess the other thing I wasn't quite clear on when I was talking about the notification, when we do the zonings, then we do that, you know, noticing to the adjacent property owners within 300 feet, and the certified mailings within 100 feet, and the property owners that are in these areas to be, you know, that are annexed in. The town will pay for the cost of doing the zoning. I realize I wasn't that clear on that.
And I forgot to ask if there's anybody in the public that would like to speak on this issue. Having heard from none, I'll restate my earlier thing. Do we have a motion regarding this particular agenda?
Do we want to see the exhibit that will show the more clearly the areas, what you requested before?
I think to the best of the town's ability, I know that it could be a complete nightmare to go back and try to find where some nuancey changes may have been made. So, I think rather than make it too difficult, maybe do the best you can.
Okay. Yeah. Most of the zone changes should have been by ordinance, so, I mean, it should match up.
Okay.
It's just making sure that we have that good base map.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve ordinance 14-05.
You moved to approve it?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second? Before there can be any discussion, there has to be a second.
I'll make a motion in a second.
Okay. Do we have any discussion on this before we go to vote?
I still have a concern of adopting something that we're not sure is correct or not. And until I have a better comfort zone in reference to that the zones are correct and we have the properties within the town limits addressed, I mean, it's difficult to approve something carte blanche. I mean, I just don't feel comfortable at this point. I would prefer the table is what I would like, and see what... I don't... I understand it's a huge task to go through since the last time it was adopted up to now, what was... Has been approved through the years, but maybe additional information, just to give me a little bit of peace of mind, that we're close, or the map we're looking at is pretty much what the town has adopted in the past.
I actually agree with that, and that's why I brought it up, if you want to put the staff through the task of putting the exhibit together for us, so we have a clear understanding.
So...
And so, I mean, obviously...
Commissioner Luks, withdraw your motion.
Yeah. I'm withdrawing the motion, because, I mean, it's a question to what extent we rely on the staff, and where do we get our comfort? And I'm with you, so...
And I will draw my second.
Okay.
So, I make a motion to table this in pending getting more information for the commission regarding the process and the areas affected, clearly delineated. Am I covering everything that you want to?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'll make a second to do it. Now, I feel more comfortable tabling it now.
Okay. We have a second. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Lucero, good evening.
Additional discussion? I just want to just reach out to the planning zone, and Ms. Perkins, is 30 days suffice, or do you need additional information, additional time to investigate and see what else you could compile for us, so we can have a better comfort zone of what we're adopting?
I think 30 days is fine.
Okay.
You know, it's important. I wasn't sure what level you have been oriented or informed about the zoning map previously, so now I have an idea. So, I will pull that other map, and we'll get a list of the ordinances, and we'll try and at least identify them somehow.
Okay.
I mean, part of it is that our GIS person is actually in another department, and so, that's been part of our problem, is trying to get the map, which was actually our struggle for this meeting. So, we'll try and do our best. If not, you know, I still think it's a priority, so we're going to... We'll try and do it within 30 days. It may be 2 months.
Thank you. So, we have a motion in a second. Oh, I'm sorry.
Would it be a problem to get a full-size map for each member of the commission? Because this is, you know, kind of fuzzy around the edges.
Yes. I'll talk to our GIS person.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, did you want like a little presentation on the transect zones?
That'd be great.
Okay. Okay.
You're welcome, then.
Okay.
So, we have a motion in a second, but we haven't gotten a vote yet, so do we have a roll call on the vote?
All right. Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Luks?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero?
I'm going to abstain since I was...
Yeah. And we missed you, actually, because I think you could have helped us with this. So, it's passes four with one abstaining.
And I think we need to go ahead and let the record reflect at this point that Commissioner Lucero has joined the meeting, and now we're moving on to item 8C. It's consideration of possible approval of PZ 2014-3 Cunningham Properties, and I believe they are requesting a zone change from C2, general commercial to RA20 residential agricultural at 403 Paseo de Pueblo Sur. Ms. Perkins, would you like to give a summary of that case?
Amy actually did the staff report for this, so...
Amy?
Yeah.
There you go.
So, just a quick background. So, prior to 2002, it was zoned agricultural. It was switched in 2002 to commercial, and there has been no development on the property since 2002, so the applicant is asking to change back to RA20, or change to RA20, which is residential agricultural.
And did you see any issues with that change in your analysis of the change?
Staffed in. The only thing that we saw is that we would prefer that this one, if this is approved, that the second case that we're looking at today is also approved.
Because they're... Are they contiguous pieces of property?
Yes.
Property? Would the applicant like to speak on this at all?
You don't need to have a...
You've got to come up.
Here. You've got to swear in.
We've got to get you on the record, not for us, but for the people watching on TV, all three of them.
Great.
So, you have to raise your hand. Do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
And then, can you provide your name and address?
Joan Cunningham, 403 Paseo de Pueblo Sur.
Thank you.
The... This is the wrong address on here. It's 403 Paseo de Pueblo Sur. That's our residence, so...
So, what is the address supposed to be?
Well, it's... There's not really an address, because there's... It's just vacant land.
It's just the land surrounding that address?
It's the land on the corner of Paseo de Pueblo Sur and Paseo del Camion, that corner, going back to Salazar Extension. I wish we had a map, but...
Yeah. We could have shown...
Is that... That's that piece where the school is at and stuff?
It's behind the school.
Behind the school?
It's right here, right? Yes.
Yes.
This school's here. Is that right?
Should it... I mean, can I come over here? Yes. And it's actually, they have this, it's on this map.
Right.
But, yeah, this is Paseo de Pueblo Sur, and this is Camion, and this is Salazar, and it's the property right back in here.
So, it like buds up to agricultural now? So, if we rezoned it, it would not be budzoning?
I see.
Because the adjacent parcel here, then would all... All of this would then be basically agricultural. And it's a huge parcel. I mean, there's actually 2 parcels here. But they're huge. You look at the number of acres?
It's 28 for this first case, and then it's 46 for the second one.
It's 47.688.
Yeah. So, we're talking a lot of acres.
There's another 20 from in there, too, that we're not rezoning, and this is a plane.
Which is, I think, why it's the 47 for the actual case.
Is this the one that comes down beneath... Behind Keys and not in that area?
This is a...
Which is, I think, why it's the 47 for the actual case.
Is this the one that comes down beneath, behind Keiths and not in that area?
Yep.
Okay.
The other 20 is part of it.
And is this that a piece that's up on the top then?
No.
Behind the school, I, yeah, where the school is and...
Nope, that's excluded.
Not swear.
Do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And then can you please state your name for the record?
Rolzef Cunningham.
Thank you. And if you want, you can use the map.
Yeah, well, Billy's way familiar with it because he's got his gigantic propane tank right up above it.
I just wanted to be clear on, right, where is it?
Salazar Road.
Yeah.
Keiths Land.
Yeah.
Then you got Yarovitz and, you know, I actually don't know who owns that bottom. I think it's a Beta and, um, Old Ruth Houston.
Is it on the left side of that extension or on the, as you're going?
As you're going south, it's on the right side.
Oh, okay, I know where it's at.
But that's, that's just another 20 acres that's added into it. Everything that's being, that we're trying to change the zone on is east of the Salazar all the way up to Paseo de Pueblo Sur.
Oh, okay, now I...
But the school area, the Arroyo and the hill there to Salazar, that's all excluded. We're not trying to rezone that because obviously we can't.
Yeah.
We'd have a non-conforming use.
So if you remember, Mr. Cunningham, the, uh, you've had this property for a long time. What was the original intent of having it changed to commercial?
The original intent of changing it to commercial was to make me a rich and powerful man.
Aren't you already?
No, I'm a poor stupid man at this point. Uh, no, we zoned it in 2002 to get Walmore on there, which I think most people here, particularly two of our council members, I'm sorry you didn't get into that, but we did our part.
Thank, thank you.
I shouldn't have voted for you. You would have won.
I'm flattered, thank you.
Yeah, it's, uh, we got the crap kicked out of us then. We've been getting the crap kicked out of us for 20 years and we just want to peacefully go back into a farm and let everybody do whatever the heck they want out there.
And, and you're probably the most familiar with that area generally beyond your land.
Yep.
Uh, what around that area has actually been developed commercially? Just for the public's knowledge.
What around, it, it's more like what has gone down from being commercially in that area. Cotum Walker Ford's about to fold, which used to be part of that piece that was bought from us years and years ago, because the gas station that already folded and got taken by the Mitchells was a divorce settlement with my mom and dad, so we lost all of that property and it's now no longer commercial. The Fina Station across the street is folded. Uh, there's been more folding of commercial properties than development of commercial properties in that area in the last 20 years, in the last 10 years.
And what's your intent if it's changed and zoned to agricultural?
You want a pipe dream?
Yes.
This is what I'd love to see have happen there. I would love to see a good working farm that can pay its taxes, actually make a couple of bucks on top of that, house some folks that don't have really much housing at this point, they're basically freaking homeless. And the pipe dream is to have it as an educational facility as far as agricultural goes. Because seeing the kids coming down and the joy in their eyes and the fun in their little feet and hands out there playing in the vegetables that we grow illegally, uh, is...
Not anymore.
Outstanding, just outstanding. My mother would jump out of her freaking grave if she could and cheer. That's pipe dream. Don't know if we'll get there or not. We ain't had much help.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham.
Thank you, guys.
Is there anybody else in the public that would like to speak on behalf of this zone change? Okay, now, having heard none, it's...
I do, I want to speak.
Okay. You're, you're close.
Do I need to swear in?
You do.
Yes, can you state your name for the record?
My name is Lisa Brissell.
And do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Well, I, I didn't, I don't have anything planned, but I, what I'd like to say is that the opportunity to farm and grow, grow organic food and to have, uh, goats with goat milk and goat cheese and have just a great organic business going there is actually an industry. It's, it's helpful to the community, it's helpful to the town and the county, it brings people together and it's harmless and it's, um, edifying. And so I just want to be here in support of the whole premise of what they're trying to do. And I know it's been an uphill battle for Roy and he's tired, but I think that, um, I think it's fair. I, I think that it's not asking for anything that is going to hurt the town or the county and it's really going to help in the long run, all of us, to become a tighter community. And I think, um, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Luce?
A question for staff. This is our first possible streamlining case, right?
Yes.
So do we have to do a preliminary approval and then final, or we can just say this is, this is a...
This is it, huh?
Hallelujah. That's all I can say.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Commissioner?
I mean, at a time when we see so many people trying to sell their land or, you know, into a commercial zoning and stuff, I'd like to applaud the Cunningham's for what they're trying to do. I think it's really great and, uh, you know, to see somebody actually want a state pool is just, uh... And do what you're doing, I think, is something that we as a community need to applaud because not too many people are willing to do that now.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'll make a motion when we're ready.
Uh, I've got one question. Was there a requirement to notify surrounding property members of the change?
Yes, yes.
And that was done?
Yes, the Cunningham's did it.
And there was no, no objection or opinion or content to that?
We got our last notification today, our last green card back. Uh, I've talked to two or three of the property owners. One of the biggest ones in the neighborhood being the Gonzalez's, they actually, I thought, might show up today, but when I told Ms. Gonzalez that we wanted to go on her property in the town, wouldn't let it. She said, I won't repeat what she said. So it's in her favor.
Okay, well, that covers all my questions. Any other commissioners have any comments or questions?
I do. I think the address itself is, is, is wrong, so we probably should include maybe a plot number or something for, for that property so that we can do it appropriately.
I think it's a good idea just to have a parcel description rather than an address so that we know exactly where the, I think we all know where the word is going to be.
And we have the acreage too.
Yeah.
Oh, you got to do sick Walmore.
Okay, with those comments, I think we're going to go ahead and close the session. Uh, do we have a motion from a commissioner?
Mr. Chairman?
All right, Commissioner Luce?
Following Billy's suggestion, I applaud the Cunningham's for doing this. It's been a long, tough road and I would like to make a motion to approve case number 2014-4 based on staff recommendations and findings of fact.
Isn't it, uh, dash three?
Did I hit the wrong one?
There's two, there's two, uh...
Okay, dash three, 2014-3. I was looking at the wrong, wrong package. Based on findings of facts and staff recommendations. And, uh, this is to be a final, final hearing and it's subject also to approval of case number 2014-4 that we're about to handle.
I think you need to act on each one separately.
I do, yeah.
Well, we, we are. I'm just making this conditional approval, conditional final approval, subject to approval of 2014-4.
I think that's fine.
Okay.
I think it's fine.
And I will second that.
And then, uh, now that we have a second, a quick discussion, I think that Commissioner Lucero's point about having a correct property description should be added to the motion just so we have it clarified.
Well, yeah, the complete, not a parcel number, but maybe the complete legal description, copy of a deed, title work.
And do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
Now that we've had our second, uh, we can go to discussion amongst commissioners. Any further discussions matter?
I just want to say that, uh, I think this is exactly what this town needs. I mean, the commercial properties have been dying off like flies and, uh, to take piece of land that, uh, the owners have not been able to do anything with and turn adversity into something positive is, is a worthy cause and I think we need to see more of it and support it.
Uh, any other commissioners like to say anything? Okay, I think we can go to roll call vote, please.
Okay, Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Luce?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Uh, the motion passes five to zero.
Okay, uh, I think we'll briefly move on to item 8D, uh, case number PZ 2014-4. Uh, it's the same premise and it's a parcel that Commissioner Luce has already brought up as a conditional approval of the prior, um, item. So I think, uh, I'm going to just skip right through this. Is there anybody from the public like to speak on this particular item? Okay, uh, having heard none, uh, is there any discussion before we move for a motion? Okay, having heard none, uh, is, would, would a commissioner like to make a motion as to item 8D?
I'll make the motion. Approved, uh, case number 2014-4 based on staff recommendations and findings of facts and, uh, this will also grant the final approval to 2000, case number 2014-3.
Okay, and do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I'm going to go to roll call vote, please.
Okay, Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Luce?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero.
And, okay.
Planting time.
Congratulations. Okay, let's move on to item nine, matters to the commission. Are there any commissioners have any issues they'd like to bring up at this time?
I'd like to ask staff, um, oh, first, on, uh, on your list, Planning and Zoning Commission, um, Commissioner Justin Lee is the chairman now.
Oh.
And Anthony Perez is vice chairman, right?
Yes.
That's correct, yeah, we need to update that.
Correction. And then I want to find out now that we have change of guards at the, at the town. Um, I called, uh, Mayor Tobe Barone this morning to congratulate him and I, I suggested to him that I would offer my resignation from the PNZ so he would be able to appoint his own commission the way he sees it fit. He declined and so my question to you is, uh, are there going to be any changes or reappointing or, uh, how does the change of guards affect our commission?
You know what, I have no idea on what, tentatively, we have a council meeting that's a, an organization meeting on, um, March 11th. And so on that agenda, I put the Planning and Zoning Commission and I put the members' names, the proposed terms, because a lot of the terms, um, like, uh, Doug Patterson and Anthony Perez, they were, their term expired in 2012 and they were still serving until the mayor appointed somebody to replace them and they kept continuing. So because of that, I had to kind of make up a new list and new terms. I don't know if, um, we're going to have that meeting, nor do I know if the mayor will, um, use the existing commissions that are in place and their membership. Um, most of the boards that I've looked at have terms that have expired and they're usually appointed by the mayor, so I have no idea.
Okay.
Uh, to follow up with that question, um, can we as a commission get a list of all of us, of our terms if we're, uh, expired or if they're still, still around? I mean, I, I don't know how, I don't know what my term is.
I can send that to you.
We're not expiring, Dennis.
I'd like to bring up a...
Indefinitely.
I'm interested in, I think, Ms. Perkins, you addressed this before at one point. I think I actually missed the meeting, so, um, I'm sorry if I'm duplicating effort here. I'm really interested in what's going on with the highway corridor on Paseo de Pueblo Sur and, uh, I want to know the status of what the highway department, state highway department has for building that up and I'd like to see kind of what their plan is and see if we can have any kind of effect or at least give, give an opinion that maybe somebody else can have an effect on making that a better highway corridor. Because my understanding right now is that, uh, there's money in, in the funds to, to rebuild it, uh, but the plan is to just tear it down and rebuild it the same way that it is. And, uh, I don't necessarily personally agree with that and I'd just like to see, uh, a presentation. I don't know if we can get somebody from the state to give that presentation or...
Uh, we can get the New Mexico Department of Transportation to come in. I can ask Javier.
And what are they tearing down?
The entire Paseo Sur, I believe.
I've had the New Mexico, um, Department of Transportation come to public meetings before and actually show us what they're planning and get public input on that and I've had them come to Planning and Zoning Commissions. So I'm sure they'd be willing to do that.
Do you know, do you have any idea of any timelines on any of that?
No, um, our public works director's been dealing with that primarily, but I, I have talked with Javier about certain projects along Paseo de Pueblo Sur and, um, kind of let him know that, you know, some developments going on here and there. But normally, you know, when they, when they get to a certain phase of their design, they, they do want public input. And I know that there were some meetings, but I didn't, a lot of them I think happened at the same time as this meeting. So let me ask him.
I would love to have that opportunity so I can reiterate my pet peeve and, which is the roundabout at, uh, Albright and Paseo.
Okay.
And in a lot of other places.
Right, right. Every place where it's feasible, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else, commissioners? Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a second, all to the favor, signified by aye.
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 Well done, commissioners.